Good evening and welcome to the, our meeting of the Elizabeth Board of Education. This is a combined agenda and regular scheduled business meeting of the Elizabeth Board of Education pursuant to New Jersey statutes and the rules adopted by the Board of Education. Notice of this meeting was sent to the Star Ledger and Cable Vision of Elizabeth, New Jersey on November twenty first, two thousand and twenty-five. In addition, this notice is posted in the bulletin board of the lobby of five hundred North Broad Street. And pursuant to this act, a copy has been filed with the City of Elizabeth, Clerk of Elizabeth, New Jersey. We want to welcome everyone present here to the school at School Fifty-One and to our television viewers to this November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the Board of Education. We are here to govern, provide management oversight and make policy for the district. The superintendent manages the district. This is a meeting of the Board in public, not a meeting of the public. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of Elizabeth Board of Education public record. So please refrain from your electronic devices, if you have any electronic devices that are on. Please refrain and put them on silent if anyone is talking. We also, since this is legally mandated, we cannot have any interruptions during our meeting. We may have to ask periodically, should noise start to interfere, for you to leave or be dismissed from this meeting. There'll be a public portion for the citizens to address the Board, and you must sign in prior to the public portion of the meeting so that you may be, have an opportunity to speak. The sign-in sheet states the name, address, telephone number, and the reason that person wants to speak, whether it is an agenda item or a general public education comment. We are pleased to have you here at this meeting, this evening, joining us here on this beautiful holiday week. I want to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving and thank you for joining us here at the Elizabeth Board of Education, Public Schools. And we also want to apologize for the start, the delay in start of the meeting. Mr. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Barbosa. Titulus. Carvalho.
Here.
Chevres. Jacobs.
President.
Marina Ortega.
Here.
Concalves Pustana. Rivera. Naron.
President. At this time, please join me for a moment of silence for the following individuals. Nicholas DiMarco Senior, retired Director of Human Resources and former Principal. Mauricio Fernandez, father of Jerica Fernandez, Principal of Joseph Batten School Number Four. Sebastiano Vegas, father of Christina Vegas, Principal, Jerome Dunn Academy of Mathematics, Technology and Art School. School Number Nine, Manova Escobano, mother of Thomas Escobano, Lead Investigator, and Dr. Roslyn Virginia Bowden, former LDTC of the Elizabeth Public Schools. Our hearts and prayers go out to their families on their passing and... Thank you for this moment of silence and may their legacies live on in our hearts and in all our memories for their wonderful years served here at the Elizabeth Public Schools. At this time, please remain standing for the Admiral William F. Horsley, Public Safety, Junior ROTC. At this time, would our Vice President, Maria Carvalho, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the Star Spangled Banner.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
At this time, Board Member Jerry Jacobs, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Ethics? You may be seated at this time. At this time, I turn the floor over to our Superintendent Schools who will introduce our student representative for today.
Good evening. Adriana Valentin is a senior at Thomas Edison Career and Technical Academy where she serves as a senior class Vice President and proudly represents her peers. A driven scholar and member of the National Honor Society, she has consistently earned honor roll distinction throughout all four years of high school. Adriana thrives on community involvement and leadership. From coordinating school events and fundraisers to participating in the Building Future Leaders Program, she brings energy, organization, and heart to every initiative. Her love for gardening and commitment to volunteer work reflects her dedication to growth, both personal and collective. Inspired by her uncle, a successful entrepreneur who built a thriving business selling corn, Adriana discovered her passion for business and the entrepreneurial spirit. She plans to major in business and minor in forensic psychology with the long-term goal of launching her own business and uplifting others through her journey. She has applied to several colleges and is especially interested, excited about Rutgers University and Kane University, as well as our Union County Community College. Adriana looks forward to the next chapter of her academic journey and is eager to turn her ambition into a lasting impact. It is my pleasure to introduce Adriana Valentin as our student representative for this evening and represented by Mr. Danny Ortiz, the Principal of Thomas Edison Career and Technical Academy.
Mr. Kennedy, can you please include our student representative in the roll call to have reflected that Adriana...
Yes, thank you.
Valentin is in attendance this evening.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, the public portion is open to the public. Individuals who have signed up to for public portion may now address the Board in public. Please keep in mind, there is a sixty-minute time limit for public comment. Please adhere to your time. This evening, we have Mr. Aldo Lutima. We have Ms. Maria Frantini. Tini. Good evening, Ms. Maria.
I don't like to come here. All right, I am still in mourning. But when you have teachers, educators that want to come after my grandchildren, now we're personal. That witch that begins with a B, Ms. Saunders from School Twenty-Eight, she thinks in our household, we only accept E's. When you see a child that always had E's is going down and the parent is constantly asking her what's going on and the teacher does not get in touch with parents and saying, you know, something's going on with your child. He's bringing his grades low. Then all of a sudden, my daughter-in-law goes and sees her today and says, can I speak to you? And then she had the nerve to tell my, oh, I'm sick. I can't come outside. You're sick and you're teaching children in their classes? You send an email. She doesn't get back. So I don't know who these teachers are. But when you have parents that are concerned about a child's education, that a child's always on super attendance every marking period for the past five years, and you see something going down and the teacher does not get in touch with the parent, but at the end of the marking period, you're going to say, oh, we didn't put grades in? That's unacceptable, especially with my grandchildren. I don't get involved with it until my children is getting dicked around by teachers. You're not doing it to my grandchildren. We fought too hard for their education.
I'm sorry, please refrain from the profanity.
I don't care. I don't care. I'm pissed. You just don't understand what your teachers are doing to the children. You just don't understand. Now you're fucking with my grandchildren. You don't do that shit. Don't do it.
Thank you. Ms. Aldo, Mr. Aldo Lutima? I'm assuming he's outside? Okay. Again, we want to apologize for the language used during the public portion of this meeting. Obviously, tempers has flared and gotten a little out of control, so we do apologize for that. And we'll make sure to address the situation and make sure that it's handled appropriately. Again, our apologies to the Elizabeth Public Schools community and all that are viewing, tuning in today and to all in attendance. We do apologize for that interruption. This concludes our public portion of the meeting. At this time, we're going to turn it over to our Superintendent for Community Updates.
Thank you, Mr. Naron.
Following that, we'll be reviewing the agenda. Thank you.
So this evening, I'll be presenting the community updates for the month of November. And I have my own remote control. Thank you. So we would like to begin with a reminder to all of our families that tomorrow, Wednesday, November twenty-sixth, our schools will be on a half-day schedule. Our high school students will be dismissed at eleven forty-five in the morning and our students from our pre-K and elementary schools will be dismissed at twelve fifteen. Our schools will, and district will be closed on both Thursday and Friday in celebration of Thanksgiving and certainly wishing all of our families a wonderful holiday. Would like to now share with our families, report cards were made available yesterday on Power School on November twenty-fourth. So for our parents and our guardians, the report cards for the first marking period were made available. We want to make sure that you log into Power School and you're able to access your child's performance on the first marking period. We will have a step-by-step instructions on our district website available to our families in order to assist you with being able to access your child's report cards. I know our students have been working very hard. Our teachers have been working diligently on ensuring that our children receive the best education possible. And next, I turn to information that's available on our district webpage. We ask that you please visit our webpage. We've included information as it relates to flu and RSV. It's been reported that both flu and RSV are on the rise. So we have provided valuable resources to our community on our district webpage that offer both the symptoms as well as steps that you can take to protect yourself from these illnesses. And also with regard to, not only on the district webpage, but if you hover over Students and Families and then select Flu and RSV Resources, you're able to see the various clinics in the City of Elizabeth that are offering services. And with that, I'm going to show you exactly what I'm referring to. So you click on the Flu and RSV Resources icon at the bottom of the menu page and you will find the necessary resources to assist. And with that, we have flyers that are also posted. The City of Elizabeth, our Mayor, Bowidge, and the Department of Health and Human Services are hosting a pre-K flu clinic on December second. And that is from three to six thirty in the evening at our Peters Town Community Center that's located at four eighteen Palmer Street. And this event is for our Elizabeth residents only, and it's a walk-in clinic. The flu shot is a requirement for children ages six months through fifty-nine months, five years old, attending preschool or a licensed childcare in the state of New Jersey. And the required documents include photo ID, proof of residency, the child's most recent immunization record, and children who do not receive the vaccine by December thirty-first may be excluded from school or childcare until that vaccine is provided. Those are the regulations from the New Jersey Department of Education that require our children to be vaccinated. So next, we turn to our issue of Inside EPS. And we are celebrating the performance of our Elizabeth High School marching band that recently competed in two championship weekends, which included state and national competitions at the South Brunswick High School. And the EHS marching band placed fifth out of ten and took the New Jersey Group Four Open Caption Awards of the first place in percussion and color guard. And at the Open Class Championships at MetLife Stadium, EHS was the bronze medalist, placing third out of eleven bands, including first in percussion, capping off an undefeated season for the percussion group. So our sincere congratulations to our students that work incredibly hard in the evenings, the weekends, and really are incredibly talented. So we now turn to our U.S. News and World Report, recently issued its rankings of the best elementary and middle schools that were ranked on two criteria, fifty percent for mathematics and reading proficiency with twenty-five percent weight for each subject and fifty percent for mathematics and reading performance, as well as a twenty-five percent weight for each subject. The schools, Elizabeth Public Schools, that were ranked among the top twenty percent of all elementary and middle schools throughout the state of New Jersey. So we start with our best elementary schools, listing of school number seven, Taran C. Riley, number one hundred and thirty-two, and that is in the nation. William F. Halloran, school number twenty, number fifty, one hundred and fifty. And Victor Moravlek, school number twenty-one, ranking number three hundred and seventeen. And that is out of the elementary ranking, I'm sorry, overall in New Jersey. And then we turn to our best middle schools and our school, Taran C. Riley, ranked number forty-seven. William F. Halloran ranked number fifty-nine. Victor Moravlek, school twenty-one, ranked number one fifty-four. Our Omora School Twelve ranked number two hundred and twenty-four. Dr. Albra, Outsite Academy, school number twenty-nine, ranked number two hundred and sixty-three. And Dr. Antonia Pantoja, school number twenty-seven, ranked two hundred and seventy-eight. And this is recognizing the best middle schools in all of New Jersey. And that included one thousand four hundred and thirty-six public elementary schools that were competing. Include. And of course, lastly, a happy Thanksgiving to all. So thank you so much for this month's announcements. And I'll turn it back over to our Board President, Mr. Naron.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Thank you for those community updates. At this time, we want to go over the agenda and set the agenda for today. Items One A Official and Private Minutes of October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five, and One B Treasures Report, September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Were there any questions from the Board? Seeing none, hearing none. Mr. Kennedy, please add Tabs One A and One B to the agenda. Tab Two A Personnel Report. Are there any questions from the Board?
Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner Moreno?
I don't have a question. I have only a comment. This month is Thanksgiving and I want to give my special thanks to the Human Department because every month, as you see, we have a huge agenda. And the agenda includes higher, this agenda includes higher twelve T-shirts. And the agenda includes higher, this agenda includes higher, 12 teachers for assistance, security, custodians, and also accommodate transfers based on the needs of the schools. And plus that, after-school coordination. That's been, behind the scenes, is a lot of work and dedication. It's fingerprints, all due days, and everything that's been this month. During Thanksgiving, I want to recognize everyone doing amazing work. But I noticed a lot of work behind the scenes. And thank you to the Human Resources Secretary. Phone calls and everything, because it's not easy to track in all the information to make sure we have our teacher and our staff on time for the needs of our schools. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions for Tab 2A? Seeing none, hearing none. Mr. Kennedy, please add Tab 2A to the agenda. Tab 3 Tuitions Report. Any questions from the board? Seeing none, hearing none. Please add Tab 3 to the agenda. Tabs 4 to 4D Superintendent's Report. Are there any questions from the board? Seeing none, hearing none. Please add Tabs 4 to 4D to the agenda. Tabs 5 Authorizations Report. Are there any questions from the board? If there are no questions, please add Tab 5 Authorizations Report to the agenda. Finance and Accounting Reports, Tab 66A. Are there any questions from the board? Yes, Commissioner Jacobs?
Mr. President, I have a question.
Sure.
So I was looking at the authorization reports, and I see that we're paying our bills here for electricity, PSC, and gas. But I'm just wondering why every time we come here, it's like so cold in here. I almost thought we weren't paying the bills, but I see that we are. So just wondering why every time, every month we come in here, it is freezing cold. And now it's winter.
Well, I'll tell you one person that's not cold.
And my constitution is not good enough to handle this freezing cold.
Director Malanis is real hot right now.
And a full trench coat, that's lying. I just wanted to point that out to you, Mr. President.
Even our directors have their jackets on. Even our directors have our jackets on.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacob, for that SNL moment. We appreciate it.
Thank you for speaking up, Mr. Jacobs.
You're welcome.
All right. Back to the regular scheduled program. Tab 6A and Tab 66A Finance and Accounting Reports. We do pay our bills. Thank you. So Mr. Kennedy, you can please add Tab 6 to 6A to the agenda. Okay, Tab 7 Award of Contracts.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Yes.
The contract with IXL Learning. Hi.
She does have her coat on.
She does. Very nice coat.
She's ready.
Actually, both of the contracts on that page. I just wanted a little information on what they are and who they service.
Okay, the bottom two?
Contract with IXL Learning?
Sure. IXL Learning is a licensed program that we use for supplemental learning for our MLs and special ed population. It's mostly used in the high school, but some of our middle school students use it also. And we use it as a supplemental program in our after-school programs with those populations also. We've been using it for several years now.
It's not from their IEPs, is it?
No.
Not at all. Okay, thank you. And the next one, the one, the contract with New York Medical College?
Sure. That's our affiliation agreement with the college for clinical experiences for speech and language pathologists. So when those students are in the college and they need to come and do an internship or have mentor hours, that's our affiliation agreement with the university. So we can partner with them to host them if they're requested or live in our area. We normally host them for the universities.
Did we do, did we do this last year?
This specific college, I don't know if we did last year. I could check on that and let you know. The ones on the next page, we did those contracts last year.
I see that.
And sometimes the affiliation agreements are actually three years. They last for three years, so we don't have to do it every year. So sometimes you will, you may not see these annually. It will be every third year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President?
Any additional questions?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner Moreno?
Thank you. This is for Dr. Valalis too. Thank you. First, thank you always. You have very interesting requests and, you know, recommendation. I really appreciate, you know, look like you go in different needs of the schools. My question is only for clarification. This mean in page number two, the contract with William Patterson University, I guess a great university, also Fairfield Dickinson University, another great university. This is for students?
These are for student teachers essentially, or student practitioners. These are those people in college who need to do internship hours and/or mentorship hours within the district as part of their credentials to graduate.
Okay. Thank you so much for the clarification. I appreciate. Is one year? Is per year? Or is per year?
For the students or for the contract?
For the student.
For the students, it typically is a year, but some of these, like, for instance, the speech and pathology, or really the social work, could go into two years, depending on how many hours they need to do within their requirements for their graduation and for their certification.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate. And the last comment. You make that connection with the universities?
Our department works with the universities. Sometimes the universities work out, reach out to us. Sometimes we have students that reach out to us, and then we reach out to the students. These, for instance, we also work with special services because, and with student services, because social workers go through student services, and the speech and pathologists go through special services. So together, between the universities or the three departments, we work with the universities to get the contracts.
I really appreciate because it's something we needed. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The last part is on page five. This is for Dr. Anthony D. Donato. The contract with Mother Against Drug Driving, very interesting, very, you know. And I want you comment. For the community, no. And it's very interesting. Can you explain to me and to the community a little bit? Thank you.
Sure. So this is actually our second year partnering with MAD. And they primarily work with our high school students and with our seniors. And they do a whole presentation and curriculum around prom safety. So it was really successful last year with mostly all of our seniors. So we brought them back this year to continue that partnership.
And that program is, what is specific month?
So it generally can be any month, but we really ramp it up the month or two before prom. So it's really relevant.
We're in the same page. Okay, thank you so much. I really appreciate.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just wanted to tell Dr. D. Donato that I'm really happy that Tito's coming back. Tito the dog.
The schools are very excited. Welcome him back.
I'm really excited. Can't wait.
Any other questions or concerns from the board?
Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner Jacobs?
I have a question for Director DeAd...
DeAnado?
Doctor DeAnado, thank you.
Yes, I know the name very well.
Page six. The contract with GaggleNet, reference to mental health care. Can you expound upon that for us, please?
Sure. So this is our third or third year partnering with Gaggle. So they offer telehealth therapy for our students at no cost to our families. So that's a title program, a title-funded program. And it essentially, at either a request from a family or a request by our school, allows those students to participate in telehealth therapy.
Thank you. So how does that also, now, does that complement? Because we know that the YES program now has been discontinued. But we still have some elements of that here in our district. Does that complement those services that were provided by the YES program?
Yeah. So whether it's YES program or NJ4S, all of our partnerships, we work in collaboration. So they could be receiving services there and, in addition, receive telehealth services. So it's a continuum of care. We work with the families. We work with the schools. We work with the practitioners to make sure we're delivering all of the necessary supports for all of our students.
So this contract here with GaggleNet, is that a per-use contract or a flat free rate?
It's a per-use contract.
Thank you. I have an additional question on page seven. The contract with Stepping Stones Group LLC. I noticed that this is for a social worker for school two, starting in December, going through June 2026. Just wondering why we're using an outside service versus hiring someone for the position?
So that's specifically to replace a leave, for a leave of absence? So temporary.
Thank you.
Mr. President? Yep. Same here to you, Dr. Anthony. Okay, page seven. The contract with breaking the cycle is, I realize, it's virtual for prevent bullying? And how are you planning to select the school? Is based on the principal requirement, incidence per school? Or is it specific to address some schools? How we will be select the schools? Like, it's important topic.
So you're right. It's on bullying prevention. It's actually in-person assemblies. They come in and provide that, and the individual schools would reach out if they're interested. So yes, we look at data to support that need. We determine which schools have, you know, the cases. And then we partner with the school to see if they're interested, and they would request them coming to the school.
Okay, thank you so much. And Mr. President, the last question. I see two contracts, one with King University, you know, for partnership, and the student be able to earn college. This is for the director of curriculum instruction. My question is, what is the criteria? No, because we select the student to earn this college credit based on the performance of, if I'm a C, B-plus student, I will have the opportunity. Because maybe I have C in geometry or in math, but I want to become a teacher. Language art in A, and based, maybe my GPA is not high enough. Or what is the criteria to select our student and then I'll let be high, student that not perform very well?
Yeah, so this program is for tomorrow's teachers. The goal is ultimately, as you said, to just build, to kind of just build tomorrow's teachers. So any students that are interested normally, but also, it's also part of our career technical education pathway. So it's really creating a pipeline through instruction. And again, getting students' interest to take part of that program.
Any student from any high school can apply?
So currently, we have this program that's taking place in Hamilton, in our current building. But ultimately, the goal is to see how can we expand it. But right now, we have it in just one location.
And at what grade level they can, on grade they can apply?
It's at the high school level.
Junior or seniors?
At least between sophomore through junior and senior years. But junior and senior, those are the group of kids that we.
And how does the student know about this great opportunity? Who let them know this opportunity? The guidance counselors?
Yeah, so they could certainly work with the administrative in that building. And then also, teachers also try to also help recruit that process as well.
Thank you so much for your clarification. I appreciate.
You're welcome.
Are there any additional questions or comments from our board members?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I have a question for Mr. Malanis on page 10. The contract with Inline Heating and Air Conditioning Company. It says that's for sick ORL. Is that for the main building or the?
It's the main building, replacing the two heating boilers for the school. They are actually used for reheating the school, not for the main heating of the school.
So what was the approximate age of that equipment that needs to be replaced?
Eight years.
Eight years? It only lasted for eight years, and now we need to replace it?
Yep.
Are we replacing it with the same type unit or some?
No, we're replacing it with a different brand. It's not the same, it's not the same units.
Thank you, Mr. Malanis.
You're welcome, sir.
Are there any additional questions?
Yes, Mr. President, I had a question.
Yes, Commissioner.
The contract with Montane Lake Board of Education. I noticed we are paid for evaluation to the students to go out the district. Just I'm curious, that happen all the time? Or does this include, when we pay for the student be out the district, does include evaluations and other services? Because I don't know, maybe that's the first time I noted that.
In this particular case, that was as a result of the identification meeting, where additional evaluations were identified, and that was included on our agenda for this evening. It's not uncommon, though, uncommon practice.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Absolutely.
Any additional questions for Tab 7 Award of Contracts? Seeing none, hearing none. Mr. Kennedy, please add Tab 7 to the agenda. At this time, we have Tab 8, and we have our Student Representative Report from Student Representative Adriana Valentine.
Good evening, board. Good evening, board members, community members, and Dr. Hugelmeier.
Good evening.
It is truly an honor to serve as the student representative at the board. As a senior at Thomas A. Edison Career and Technical Academy, I take great pride in representing my school and fellow students in this role. In addition to this position, I currently serve as both the student advisor and the class president. These opportunities have allowed me to hear students' concern as well as advocate for their needs and help foster positive changes within our school community. This role has also deepened my involvement in the vibrant life of our school. Through clubs, events, and leadership activities, I've gained a broader understanding of the power of the student voice and impact on hands-on learning. It's been an exciting couple of months across our CTE programs at Edison. The Culinary Arts Program is partnering currently with ShopRite to prepare a special Thanksgiving menu where I myself will be buying. Students are also leading the meal preparation, and they will be offered for sale through ShopRite. In construction technology, students are building the set for Jefferson's Winter Play and creating benches for schools 12 as well as 26, gaining practical, real-world skills in the process. The Graphic Design Program is preparing to welcome representatives from King University to share insights about their design pathways. This Collision Repair Program is also participating in the Recycle My Ride Initiative. Initiative, I apologize. Restoring donated vehicles that will be gifted to local charities. They also will be featured at the upcoming Northeast Trade Show. The Collision Repair Program is part, oh, I apologize. Our automotive students are training for the upcoming Skills USA competition while cosmetology students continue their weekly outreach, providing haircuts, blowouts, and manicures to our local citizens every Wednesday. We're also proud to announce Edison's newest CTE program, Ignite, where students are in the program or are working on a special project aimed to younger students to show them the manufacturing and engineering education. In addition, I'd like to highlight the work of the Safe Driving Club, led by Ms. Dubin. Last spring, they earned a $500 award for the most creative campaign in the Jersey Drives You Got Brains Champions Schools Contest. This year, the club has joined the Nikail Badlani Youth Advisory Board, becoming one of the only five schools in New Jersey to be selected to participate. Their mission is to empower youth to promote traffic safety through creative, student-led initiatives. Finally, I want to thank the district for supporting students and families with monthly financial aid nights. These events are helping ensure every student has access to the tools and information needed to complete the FASMA and to maximize their financial aid opportunities. This is just a glimpse of our incredible work that's happening all across our schools. And I am honored to share these updates with you and proud to represent not only Thomas A. Career and Technical Academy, but also the entire student body of our district. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations again, Adriana, and we wish you all the very best, truly a future leader. And we're so excited for you and the work that you, that lays ahead for you, that lies ahead for you and the leadership roles that I'm sure you'll be taking further in your life as you pursue your career and education goals. So congratulations again and we're proud to have you on the board. At this time, let's give her another big round of applause. At this time, we'd like to have our Finance Committee report by Chairperson, Commissioner Jerry Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance Committee met on November 12th of this year. Mr. John Swisher presented the preliminary results of the audit for the 2425 financial statements. Mr. Swisher reported that the district's financial statements are fairly stated and that an unmodified opinion will be contained within the report and clean opinions on internal controls and compliance. He also reported that there will be no current or repeat audit findings contained in the auditor, auditor's management report. Finally, Mr. Swisher noted the balances of restricted reserves for capital and maintenance which supported the district's ability to take care of its 30-plus facilities. A full public participation of the audit results will be presented at the December board meeting. The committee requested the table of organizations for plant, property, and equipment department and the transportation department, inclusive of titles and number of employees for each position. In addition, the committee requested an update for all capital and maintenance projects. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner. Our Special Education Committee, Chairperson, Eliana Chavez.
The committee met on November 13th. The members of the committee discussed about a key point, including finalized the CPAD policymaking is more accessible to all parents and the ongoing collaboration with the SPAM. The committee discussed the Korean News letter shared with all parents' needs, especially parents inclusive of the survey. Survey result highlighted parental interest in the special education program, information, resources for parents, special education law, and parent right and the IEP evaluation process. The survey result noted a preference for ITN section and high interest in pre-recorded video. The committee discussed the ongoing collaboration with Children's Specialized Hospital and Professional Development for children, for child study team members. That concludes my report for this month.
Thank you, Commissioner Chavez, Commissioner Jerry Jacobs for our Negotiations Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Negotiations Committee met on November 14th. Mr. Lurch, our consultant, presented the verification of 4,214 employees across 20 classifications for the EEA and explained the verification process as well as the agreement to allocate funds based on the three-year contract agreed to in the memorandum of understanding. The consultants confirmed that the costed-out salary guides were in agreement to the dollar amounts in each of the three years. The committee requested further analysis of the proposed salary guides on different job descriptions and classifications. The Negotiations Committee also met on November 20th where Mr. Lurch presented the requested analysis of the proposed salary guides on different job descriptions and classifications, including percent increases over the three-year contract. Discussion ensued. The committee reviewed the 2627 calendar and discussed the professional development dates. We are hoping that we are close to concluding our contract negotiations with the union at this point in time. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs, and thank you to all the commissioners and thank you again, Commissioner Jacobs, on a wonderful job with the Negotiations Committee. It sounds like we are at the very finish line, so we're excited to bring that to a close. All right. Resolutions 10, Resolutions 9, are there any questions from the board? Claims list. Seeing none, hearing none, please add, um, tab nine, claims list to the agenda. And now for resolutions 10 to 10N. Again, please add claims list to the agenda, Mr. Kennedy, and now resolutions 10 to 10N. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Could we have someone, may Mr. Kennedy read 10E?
10E?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy, can you please read 10E?
Or, or just explain what happened and how we serviced our families?
I can read the resolution if you'd like.
Just one.
Okay.
Sure. Whereas due to the federal government shutdown, certain federal benefit programs, including the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP, have been suspended. And whereas certain families in the district rely on SNAP benefits for meals, and whereas the Board of Education and District Administration are concerned that dispensation of SNAP may cause food insecurity for certain students. And whereas in response to the loss of federal SNAP benefits, Elizabeth Public Schools wishes to provide all students with a daily dinner meal to take home from school beginning Wednesday, November 5th at all school sites throughout the district. Now therefore be resolved that is, is the intent is to provide daily meals for our students during the time that SNAP benefits are unavailable to our families and authorizes covering the cost of the school grab-and-go meals for students incurred by the Division of Food and Nutrition. Be further resolved that this assistance shall remain in effect until after SNAP benefits have been, are reinstated unless otherwise authorized, required, or extended by the board.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. President, if I may, I want to thank the superintendent and her team and our food service director and the entire staff for taking action quickly. Many of us were here during COVID and we know what that was like. And I almost felt like we were back in COVID again, watching this take place. So I appreciate you, we appreciate you, we thank you because it's not just teaching children how to read and write. We care about them. And if they're, they don't have food in their tummies, they can't learn. And if they can't learn, they can't sleep, they can't do anything and they can't focus. So thank you for caring about all of it and about our community, so we appreciate you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, and I want to echo those statements. You know, during this great time of need, we came and we were there for our students in our community, not only to provide what's necessary, but you know, one of the strategies that we implemented many years ago was making sure that we educate the whole child through a social-emotional approach and that's part of it. So not only just caring about the Xs and Os in the classroom, but what happens outside the classroom also impacts the success rate of our students. So thank you to the entire team, the administration, the school community for coming together and really standing up and for all of those who have been servicing our district during this holiday season of Thanksgiving by providing turkeys and meals and food baskets and the acts of kindness that you've exemplified, we want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. And you know, I know thank you is just a little word, but it means a lot and it goes a long way, so thank you again.
There was, just as an aside, there was, over the two-day period, thank goodness, the SNAP benefits were restored. Over 40,000 grab-and-go meals were distributed to our students.
Thank you. That deserves a big round of applause.
Thank you for sharing that, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you. Any questions for 10 to 10N? I have a comment to the Q-SAC report. I was honored to be able to sit in on the Q-SAC review and to see that our district was up to par with all the necessary regulations mandated by the New Jersey Department of Education. Under this process, the staff worked tirelessly to make sure that we were on point and that we dotted our i's and crossed our t's. So I just want to applaud you and salute you for your hard work and the great work that you've been doing for the district. I had the privilege of doing it the first time I was president and now the second time as president. So it's done, what, every three years? Yeah, every three years. So I had the great fortune of being part of that process again. So I just want to commend the entire administration and all those who took part of it, especially your district leader, our superintendent, Oka Hugo Meyer. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. President, I have one question.
Sure.
The resolution on New Jersey Cool Grants Program, believe that Mr. Malanis, right? Can you explain, even though we're all freezing?
You mean, you want New Jersey Cool Heat Program?
But I'm excited to hear about this.
You know, this is, this is a resolution that's going to allow us to proceed with the grant procurement. This is actually the last step, so right now there is some contractual things that have to happen now. Mr. Kennedy has to sign some, some contracts and afterwards, then we start with the process of, you know, getting the equipment order and eventually install. It's all going to be handled through the Honeywell branch.
Is that foreseen for the second half of the school year?
This is going to happen now during the, you know, as a matter of fact, the shiller for this building better be ready by this summer.
Oh.
You know what I mean?
You'll be happy and I'll be miserable. Yes.
So we're going to, you know, that, then we're doing, School 28, doing the same thing, replacing the shiller and four rooftop units. And School 29, we're replacing 14 rooftop units that are already 20-some years old and where they're failing. And also in School 52, we're replacing the shiller with the same age of these buildings. So that's the, that's the idea.
It's never-ending, right? That's okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Malanis.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions to tabs 10 to 10N? Seeing none, hearing none, Ms. Kennedy, please add tabs 10 to 10N to the agenda. At this time, the President requests motion to go into private session to consider matters exempt under the Open Public Meetings Act specifically for discussion of items, legal items specifically workers' compensation, NAS, JBLG, CSSTEW, HMVA, and AG, in addition to policy 1221 revision, hopefully for the last time. The Board will reconvene in public and make, and may take formal action, may have a motion in a second.
And make a motion to go into a public, private session?
Motion has been made.
Second that motion?
Properly second it. Mr. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes.
Chavez.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Maureen Ortega.
Yes.
Van Cavis-Pastana.
Yes.
Neron.
Yes.
Kenny, are there any additional items to be added to the agenda today?
Yes, we have. One, two, three. Four resolutions, workers' comp cases, VA versus Elizabeth Board of Ed. And a resolution for workers' comp settlement, AG versus the Elizabeth Board of Ed. And we're also doing the second reading of our policy 12221, Special Education Parent Advisory Group, and regulation 1221, Special Education Parent Advisory Group. And we have a resolution for adoption of the policy and the regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Can you please add those to the agenda? At this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to our superintendent who's presenting, who will present our HIB report.
Thank you, Mr. Neron. Pursuant to board policy 5131.1, harassment, intimidation, and bullying in the Jersey statute 18A colon 37, the results of each investigation shall be reported to the Board of Education no later than the date of the next board meeting following completion of the investigation and include any services provided, training established, discipline imposed, or other action taken or recommended by the chief school administrator. Since our last Board of Education meeting on October 23rd and through November 18th, our school counselors, school-based social workers, and deputy council have completed 56 HIB investigations. Of these investigations, 22 cases were founded for HIB as per New Jersey law. There were 25 males, 41 females, 61 regular education students, and five special education students that were the alleged victims. There were 39 males, 39 females, 71 regular education students, six special education students, and one non-student that were the alleged offenders. Of the 22 cases founded for HIB, three cases were founded based on race, national origin; three cases were founded based on color; two cases were founded based on sexual orientation; three cases were founded based on gender; one case was founded based on gender identity and expression; and 15 cases were founded based on other identifying characteristics. Of the services provided and actions taken for these investigations, there were 19 skill development lessons, 42 counseling sessions, nine behavioral interventions, 13 referrals for outpatient mental health treatment, nine changes of classroom, one change of school placement, five administrative counseling sessions, 13 in-school detentions, 40 parent conferences, two referrals to outside agencies, and 22 out-of-school suspensions. And in addition, seven cases are being monitored. The HIB statute further requires that at the next regularly scheduled meeting after board members receive the initial report of HIB investigations, that the board issue a decision in writing to affirm, reject, or modify the superintendent's decision pertaining to the 28 cases that were reported to you at the last board meeting on October 23rd. In order for you to do so, the investigation summaries from those investigations, which were reported to you at the last board meeting, have been provided for your review prior to voting, and this completes the report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Board members, are there any questions in regards to the agenda items? Okay, last thing I want to say before we approve the agenda is congratulations to all our retirees, and to all those who have served the district well for many, many years. And thank you for your service and time with our district and to being dedicated to Elizabeth Public Schools. At this time, Mr. Kennedy, can you please, can I have a motion, can I have a motion and a second to approve the entire agenda?
I make a motion to approve the entire agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second has, a motion has been made and properly seconded. Mr. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Yes, with the exception of tab 7, page 6.
Carvalho.
Yes, with the exception of tab 4A and tab 4B.
Chavez.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Maureen Ortega.
Yes.
Gunkavas Pastana. Neron.
Yes, with the exception of tab 4A and 4B.
So with those votes, the entire agenda plus the additional items has passed.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, and thank you to our board members. I want to wish everybody a very happy, happy Thanksgiving, time spent with your families. We want to wish that everybody stays safe, and we look forward to seeing you back after Thanksgiving as we celebrate the holiday season. Can we have a motion and second for, to adjourn our meeting?
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion has been made.
Second.
Properly seconded. Mr. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Barbosa.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Carvalho.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Chavez.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving.
Jacobs.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Enjoy your holidays.
Maureen Ortega.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Gunkavas Pastana.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Neron.
Yes, thank you and happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Be blessed. Thank you.